Good evening, I'd like to call the Regular School Committee meeting to order. Today being May 28, 2019, we are beginning the meeting at 7:09. The meeting tonight is being recorded by the PB School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris, and we are also being broadcast live on PAT. The matters listed on our agenda tonight are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I wanted to ask everybody, if everyone could please stand, and we start the meeting off with a moment of silence, please? Thank you, and now I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Murtagh for the introduction of some wonderful students we have today from the Burke and the West Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I am so pleased to have Tempe Reed here with us today. Tempe is from the West School and is a fifth grade student. She enjoys singing, dancing, and writing. Tempe wrote her first mystery story, short story, this year. Tempe shows leadership and confidence in the classroom. She hopes to one day become a teacher. Tempe, if you can join us up front here. Welcome.[83.42][83.42](APPLAUSE). We also have Matthew Scoper from the West School. He's a fifth grader. He has an older sibling, Jackie, in ninth grade, and a younger sister, Abby, in kindergarten. Matthew enjoys learning about earth science and is consistently reading about new discoveries. Matthew is excited to participate in this year's fifth grade Olympiad. Matthew, ooh![109.22][109.22](APPLAUSE). I have more about Matthew. We have some more. Oh, Matthew is an avid Bruins fan. Woo-hoo! Good game last night. He owns four Bruins jerseys and wore Bruins jersey during the entire playoff season. Matthew also enjoys playing hockey for PBTD Tanners and hopes to be a professional hockey player. Well, welcome.[128.95][128.95](APPLAUSE). We have two Burke School students here with us this evening. Lucas Hebert. Lucas is a kind and helpful member of the Burke School community. Lucas is a son of Christine and Scott Hebert, and an older brother of Cole at the West School. Lucas enjoys math and is always looking to pick up a basketball whenever he can. Lucas has been a fabulous reading buddy to younger students while at the Burke and has volunteered to assist in kindergarten whenever he can. Lucas enjoys spending time with his family and helping complete any task that needs completing. Please join us up front, Lucas.[161.69][161.69](APPLAUSE). We have Raymond Jolly with us this evening. RJ is a kind and enthusiastic member of the Burke School community. RJ is the son of Amanda and Scott Jolly. RJ loves the exploration of science and can always be found with a good book. RJ enjoys karate and swimming in his free time. He is always looking out for his young, for younger students and helps to make everyone feel welcome at the Burke School. RJ has helped with many projects at the Burke outside the school hours during PTO events. RJ is looking forward to attending the Higgins next year and makes lots of new friends. Come join us, RJ.[197.06][197.06](APPLAUSE). And I'd like to thank Mr. Kohler and Mrs. Beacott for being here this evening, too.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[231.12][231.12](APPLAUSE).
Mayor, can I take a picture? Hi, everybody? Want to take a picture? We can get them all in there. We can... Oop, maybe. All right. Oh, that's a great shot. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.[257.12][257.12](APPLAUSE).
Every meeting always goes downhill after that.[279.27][279.27](LAUGHTER). I have to say. Okay. Next, we have approval of minutes. We have a number of meetings, starting with May 7, 2019 budget meeting.
Motion approved, May 7, 2019 budget meeting minutes.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Arnotis for approval of the May 7, 2019 budget meeting. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Motion to approve May 14, 2019 budget meeting minutes.
Second.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Arnotis for the approval of the May 14, 2019 budget meeting minutes. With no questions, we'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Motion to approve May 14, 2019 regular school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Hockman for approval of the May 14, 2019 regular school committee meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. With no questions, we'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Motion to approve May 15, 2019 budget meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Arnotis for the approval of May 15, 2019 budget meeting minutes. No questions, we'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our next item, approval of bills. Mrs. Coppins is not here today. Mr. Olympia, could I turn it over to you?
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 4172, in the amount of $1,129,682, subject to audit.
Second.
Great, thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Olympia for approval of warrant A, number 4172, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Olympia?
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 4167, in the amount of $58,866.58, subject to audit.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mr. Olympia, seconded by Mr. Hockman for approval of warrant B, number 4167. Roll call vote for approval?
Yes.
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 And I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant C, number 4169, in the amount of $5.
Dollars.
Second.
You've heard the motion for approval of warrant C, number 4169, seconded by Mr. Amico. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
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 Okay, great, thank you. Our next item is continued business. Mrs. Dunn, anything to report on the MSBA Higgins Project closeout?
No, nothing this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, in the continued business, we have the charter review. That's in front of the City Council. Everybody has a, an email in front of them. Rescheduling the June 6 meeting for the City Council review to Monday, June 24 at 7:00 PM at the Wigan Auditorium. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, thank you. Next item is public participation. Is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? The microphone is open? Yeah, please, Mrs. Maniatis, come on up. Welcome, and if you could just please state your name and...
Good evening. My name is Judy Maniatis. I'm the Assistant Principal at PBTD Veterans Memorial High School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have just left one of our favorite senior events, which is the Senior Banquet, along with the three deans, as feel it's very important to be here as well, so we stopped there and now we're here. I'll start with a brief summary of my strong investment in the PBTD public school system. Begined my career as special education paraprofessional in 1995, as I began my first master's degree in special education. Then worked as a special education teacher at the high school, became the high school IEP team chairperson, went back to school while working to obtain my second master's degree, this time in educational leadership. I was then the B-house dean of students for six years before my present position as Assistant Principal for the past six years. Very proud of our students and staff, and of the fact that students tell me that they feel safe, both physically and emotionally, in our high school. This was not the case back in the mid-2000s, when students congregated in large groups in the hallways and others were afraid to walk past the large groups in the middle of the house hallways. Due to the work of the deans of the students and the staff keeping the hallways clear and being visible constantly, the halls are now free of the crowds and the building is a safer place. Our district's motto is "Every Student, Every Day," and it needs to continue to be a place that is safe for all students. The deans' students' position is not the same as the former position of a unit director, which my late sister Patricia Power held for a decade after she served for many years as the Foreign Language Department Chair. That position consisted solely of working with discipline and attendance and consequences for associated behaviors. Just today, graduation rehearsal, I counted 23 students quickly at graduation that were there due in a large part to the work of the deans of the students. Several of these students were high-risk students who have very limited positive influences in their lives outside of school. The deans of students have formed bonds with the students, meet regularly with the students' parents, teachers, guidance counselors, to provide the encouragement and emotional support that many get nowhere other than at school. They have let the students know that they are valuable human beings worthy of success in life. Because of their care and constant contact and support, the 23 students I quickly counted will be receiving their diplomas Friday night. These situations have occurred for years without people knowing outside of administration the amount of caring and human contact that the deans of students provide on a daily basis. The perception is that the administration are disciplinarians. However, there are multiple situations where we have counseled students to remain in school, obtain their high school diploma. These are not usually top students, but those that need the special support of a caring adult. Without the third dean of students' position, the opportunity for face-to-face contact will be greatly reduced, and our students, such as the 23 at graduation rehearsal today, will not have the necessary support as they presently do. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. It's my hope that you will reconsider the importance and necessity of a third dean of students' position at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Maniatis. Thank you. Yeah, please.
Good evening, Mayor Betancourt, Superintendent Murtagh, and other members of school committee. My name is Ashlyn Fidelgo. I'm the Dean of Students for the C-House, as well as a fellow citizen of PBTD. During the last school committee meeting, you conducted an abrupt vote in the final moments of the meeting that will have a monumental impact on the landscape of the education system at PBTD Veterans Memorial High School. In the days that followed that meeting, I sent Mr. Hockman some data that clarified the role and necessity of the dean of students. I urged him to encourage each of you to review that data, which I'm hopeful you have. But in the event that you have not, I would like to share some of it with you now. Since joining the administrative team this past fall, I've stated many times that PVMHS is twice as large and half as loud as my previous district. I've quickly come to realize that maintaining such a precedent is no small feat. Year-to-date, 300 behavior referrals have been made to the C-House Dean of Students. This number represents only one-third of all referrals from teachers regarding discipline in the classroom. Not included in this number are the incidents that occur outside of the classroom. Often, these referrals lead to identifying that students are in need of additional resources, counseling, attendance remediation, special education, and 504 team meetings, placement changes, transparency and communication with families, encouragement and reassurance. Mr. Betancourt, recently, you have advocated in favor of building a new high school, stating that, quote, "We need to make sure it's a good learning environment." Creating a good learning environment takes much more than a sound, state-of-the-art facility. It takes a trained staff, ready to support today's students and the challenges they face, both in school and at home. Our students are facing mental health issues, academic stressors, substance abuse, poverty, and the impact of social media, to name a few. The dean of students is often the first line of defense for students, providing access to supports and resources. The dean of students is familiar with all parts of the process and connects school to home. This role far exceeds that of its predecessors, whom assign consequences for unacceptable behavior in an effort to re-establish authority. One of our neighboring communities made the decision to cut a dean of students a few years ago, based solely on the decline in enrollment. Recently, regardless of the abundance of supports available there, that community has voted to reinstate the position. The decision to cut a dean of students directly impacts our students. It threatens their safety. I urge you to reconsider this decision and rectify this tragic outcome. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Kroll, and I've had the privilege of being employed at PBTD Veterans Memorial High School for the last 17 years. For the last 10 of those years, I have served in the role as A-house dean of students. I am here tonight to speak about the proposed cut of a dean of students' position at the school. I fear the proposed cut will have a detrimental effect on student safety and achievement. Much has changed since I began my tenure as dean of students at the high school, not the least of which is our student population. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as the district itself, reports that our population of high-need students has increased 5.9 percent, and our population of economically disadvantaged students is up 5.5 percent over the last reporting period from 2016 to 2018. High-need students are defined as students at risk of educational failure or otherwise in need of special assistance and support, such as students who are living in poverty, who are currently working far below grade level, designated low-income or economically disadvantaged, a former ELL student, or a student with disabilities. While our student population has dropped roughly 9 percent in that time period, I see the swing coming back the other way with a larger population coming towards us. What has also changed at school and in society is culture. Whether vaping or social media, and by extension, mental health, the pressures put upon young people today are greater than at any time in recent memory. Working with families and students to help navigate the myriad of potential life-altering decisions they make is one of the most fulfilling and important duties I perform. I'm afraid that if this position is cut, my ability to make positive and appropriate interventions, along with follow-up, will be compromised and could have devastating effects on our students, school, and district. In closing, I would implore the committee to reconsider the proposed cut of the dean of students at the high school. As we continue to fight to attract students who would otherwise go to a private school or Essex Tech, we need as many of them, as many team members as possible to create a positive and nurturing environment and mitigate some of the destructive outside influences on our students. I believe the dean of students' position is a linchpin position in this fight. I am proud to be a member of the administrative team at PBTD Veterans Memorial High School, and I am proud to be a Tanner. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Edmund Terralo. I'm the B-house dean of students at the high school. My colleagues have done a great job explaining some of the things that we do and what our position entails. What I came to do is I came to talk to you about specifically one student. Every student, every day. Every student, every day. That's very important to myself, my colleagues, the students of PBTD. And that's what we try to do every single day. It's not some student, some days. It's every student, every day. So I recently received a thank-you note from a student, but this thank-you note shouldn't go to me. It should go to you, because you are the ones that decide that we have the staff that we need so that, to support our students when they need to be supported. Not much chokes me up, but this choked me up quite a bit. Every time I read it, I get very choked up. But that's because we have the time, we have the staff, we have the resources to give these students what they need. So we have a principal, we have an assistant principal, and we have three deans. That gives us the ability to meet with these students. This student, I didn't go above and beyond for. I just did my job. I was there when I was supposed to be. I spoke to them. I gave them the support they needed when they needed it. So now I'm going to read it to everyone so that they can hear it. Mr. Terralo, from, for one of my finals, I'm supposed to write a thank-you letter to someone, so I chose you. You've helped me, sorry, you've helped me and been there for me this whole year. I can't thank you enough for that. A little background, you know I've been in and out of the hospital, but I'm assuming you don't know why. This student was diagnosed with a condition I don't want to share that because it's private. When I was told that, that, I thought that I wouldn't be able to do the things everyone else was doing. But you were the one who changed my mind. From day one, you made sure that I was okay and helped me realize that I am not alone in this big school. They, you took the time to explain graduation to me and to talk to me about prom, and I'm going to both of them now. You've helped me, sorry, begin to feel like my old self again, and I'm eternally grateful for that. Thank you for everything. That's what we do. We're there for those students, the ones that don't have a voice, the ones who are suffering, the ones who are dealing with things that it's hard to even believe that students are dealing with. And that's what we do on a day-to-day basis. By cutting a dean's position, what you're doing is you're eliminating the ability and the bandwidth that we have to deal with these students who are entering our schools in increasing numbers every year. We need to continue to support them, to support our students, and it's your decision where those cuts are made and how we do that. And I think it's really important that we add back the dean position that was cut, because students like this, they'll get lost as we decide to move away and reduce staff in certain ways. So I think it's very important that you guys reconsider what you've done. I know how hard it is and the conversations that have gone on to decide what to cut and what not to cut, and what to add and what not to add. But I think this is one position that the students of PBTD need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to come forward and speak? Well, thank you, that was very powerful. We cannot talk tonight. Tomorrow, at our budget meeting, we are allowed to, but tonight, we are, under the rules of the regular school committee meeting, we cannot respond or engage, but tomorrow we are able to. Okay? But, um, thank you. Thank you. Okay. We'll now go to the superintendent's report. Turn it over to you, Ms. Murtagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our new principal of the McCarthy Elementary School, Ms. Michelle Zatoli. Michelle, if you'd like to join us up here, please. Welcome. And Michelle is currently a principal in Wakefield. She has also been a principal in another district and a vice principal in another district, and she obviously began her career as a teacher in grades two, three, and five, and she's also been a math and reading teacher in Title I schools. So, welcome, and we are very happy that you've joined us this evening, and welcome to PBTD.
Thank you very much.
Great. Welcome, Ms. Zatoli, welcome. Anybody like to make any comments or would like to say a few words?
I didn't really prepare anything, but I'm very excited to be joining PBTD in the McCarthy School. I had a brief little visit there, and it was just wonderful to see the small community and how invested all of the staff were and how excited they were to talk about the children. And just hearing the way people talk about the children really invigorates and makes me so excited to be joining PBTD, because it's the work that we do with kids. Like you said, every day that makes a difference, and working with colleagues that feel the same way is huge.
Great. Well, I just want to say the McCarthy School's a wonderful environment. I know, like all of us, we get the opportunity to visit, and recently, I was at Mrs. Manning's class and to engage with the students, and it's really a very supportive, warm place, and that's because we have great teachers and administrators there. So, I'm glad to have you on board. I look forward to working with you. I'm speaking on behalf of all of us, and I can't wait to see what takes, continues to take place, many great things at the McCarthy. So, welcome.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle. The next item on the agenda tonight is the Early Retirement Incentive Plan. I can't hear me. Um, Mayor, I'm going to just read this.
Sure.
The Early Retirement Incentive Program. The PBTD Public Schools recognizes that the FY 2020 budget to be one of the most challenging in recent memory. In an attempt to reduce payroll costs, the district will offer the following early retirement incentive. The eligibility. The PBTD Federation of Teachers, Unit A, or the PBTD Administrators Association, Unit B, member, is eligible for the Early Retirement Incentive Program if a written request is received by the superintendent's office no later than June 10, 2019, and the date of retirement occurs before September 1, 2019. A member of Unit A or Unit B who has 20 years or more of service with the PBTD Public School as of June 30, 2019, and is eligible to retire through the Massachusetts Teacher Retirement System, may request the Early Retirement Incentive. The Early Retirement Incentive is $15,000 for employees with a minimum of 20 years of service and $20,000 for employees of 25 years or more of service. The Early Retirement Incentive will be paid in three equal installments on the payroll closest to December 1st over the next three fiscal years.
Thank you, Ms. Murtagh, and this was something that I had proposed as we were working our way through the budget and certainly dealing with some increases that we were not expecting. Those increases, we've talked about quite a bit in special education, transportation, health insurance, those three primarily, but others as well, as a way to potentially save some revenue, save some money that we could then put back into our system and retain some of the programs and employees that we do have here. I'm not sure where things will go. We will see where it leads, but I did want to state that, again, this is for only Unit A and Unit B in our school department. I did receive a number of phone calls from police officers, firefighters, DPW, all of the city departments. This is not for anybody else but Unit A and Unit B. Also, I've received a number of questions. This is, we are only, as a city or town, allowed to offer a financial benefit. We cannot offer years. We cannot have anything to do with it being related to age. That is only a state law that allows for years to be given to an employee that's governed through the PERACT, the Public Employees Retirement Board. They're the only ones that could offer that type of incentive. So, this is an incentive. We looked at other cities and towns that have done this in the past. This is the first time, at least since I've been mayor, that we've moved forward on this. I have received a number of calls. I do think there was some interest, but we will see where it leads. But again, this is something only for Unit A and Unit B. I was looking to get a vote by the school committee to go ahead and release it. I did want to let everybody know, I spoke to, at link with Bruce Nelson and with Mary Henry. We discussed this item and the potential benefits, and they were fully on board with this being released and being presented to their membership. Any questions, Mr. Amico?
Just make a motion to receive initially and release.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Is this something?
No.
Okay. Any other comments or questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Since we just received this, do you mind if we take a two-minute recess and maybe come back to it in two minutes?
Sure.
Thanks.
I can't see the screen.
Thank you. We'll resume the school committee meeting. We are going to hold off on the early retirement incentive plan until tomorrow night's meeting. Okay?
Mr. Aron, my motion.
Thank you. We'll hold that motion.
Thank you. Can I continue? Thank you. Tonight, I'm also presenting food service. We have not gone up in prices and I was asked to do some, Mr. LaFleur and I put this together with Maureen Rose, who's sitting back there as well, from food service.
Motion to receive.
Second.
So if you take a look up at the top, it's what we currently are. And then we increased by 25 cents, by 30 cents, and by 35 cents. Mr. LaFleur, would you like to add anything in?
No, other than we need to revisit this. We haven't raised prices here for years. My projected budget for food service shows a $46,000 deficit for next year, so a 25-cent increase at least level funds us. And we gave you the other two options of a 30 and 35.
Any questions or comments for the superintendent or Mr. LaFleur? Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we raise the lunch prices by 35 cents on the meals. So moved.
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Any comments or questions at this time? Mr. Anodes?
I don't know if you have them now. Just comparatively, are we on level with other districts or would this bring us to a level around, closer to the communities around us or we're below right now?
Yes, we are.
And we're just staying average? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anodes. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be honest, the reason why I've made the motion for the 35 cents increase, which is going to raise lunch to 335, three, and then $3.60 for a regular-priced lunch at the levels. We know that the cost of food has gone up, the cost of everything has gone up. The meals are very well-prepared, they're all done in, you know, they're done in conformity with the USDA regulations, and they are supported by the government, but only to a certain point. And going up on the lunch price should be able to help with the cafeteria because the cafeterias used to be self, self, I'm sorry.
Sustaining.
Self-sustaining, I couldn't think of the word, self-sustaining. And then, you know, when insurance came into play, that really changed a lot of different things with the cafeterias. But in order to be able to maintain a high level of food service in the district, I honestly do think we need to go up. And I don't know how many years it's been, but I know it's been a long time since we've taken a vote on something like this, which was why I brought it up. I would also like to request the adult meals presently at $4. And I know that that's, that's a very, very good price as well. And I would like to make an additional motion, when this, when this one is voted up or down, that that go to $5 per meal. So I'll make that as a separate motion.
Okay. So currently, we have the motion on the floor that would increase, have a 35-cent increase to our current pricing. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Dunn, through the chair. Just so we're clear, we're looking at the third tier on the sheet that was just handed to us. It's 35-cent increase for breakfast, lunch, and a 25-cent increase for milk. Is that where your motion?
Actually, I wasn't going to increase the price on the milk. I just thought 50 cents for a container of milk was, was okay.
So your motion is to increase breakfast and lunch by 35 cents?
Yeah, 'cause I limited it to the breakfast and lunch.
Yeah, I thought you said just lunch, but it's breakfast too. Okay. And through chair to Ms. Murtagh, just so we're clear and everyone out there who's listening to us understands, this doesn't change the free and reduced program and eligibility for free and reduced lunch. So if you're eligible, if a student is eligible for free and reduced lunch, this increase won't have an impact on them.
That is correct, Ms. Dunn.
Okay. And we encourage people to complete the forms for free and reduced lunch. If they need or feel that they're eligible or question whether or not they're eligible, they should talk to staff members to fill out the application to make a determination as to whether or not that child is entitled to some benefits.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Okay. So we have the motion made by Mrs. Dunn. Everybody aware of the specific language that we're just pertaining to breakfast and lunch? Okay? Roll call, Mr. Amico?
For the Chair, to our business manager, Tom. Can we, can we just have the new amount, just so the public is aware? I know we have it listed here, but just so we go right down the line from elementary, middle to high school, on the lunch.
All breakfasts are currently $1. They would go to $1.35.
All school-level breakfasts are currently $1. They would go to $1.35. Lunch at the elementary is currently $3. That would be $3.35. Middle and high school are currently $3.25. They would move to $3.60. Yes, middle and high school are both the same rate. I don't know if this has been brought up with the motion, but this is for the next Okay. Any other further comments or questions? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Aron.
Yes.
And then I would like to make a motion that adult, the price of adult meals be raised from $4 to $5. So moved.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Anodes. Any comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Anodes?
Yes.
Yes. And do we need a motion to make this go into effect next year? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that these prices take effect with the, with the upcoming school year. So moved.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Further motion, seconded by Mr. Anodes. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Anodes?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Murtagh?
Thank you. Also in your packet, you have your monthly expenditure report. Any questions? Mr. LaFleur is available. And Mr. Buckley sent in a very nice letter to thank Mr. Collins again from New York Life, a $500 donation with your acceptance.
Do we need to take action? Motion to receive the donation from Mr. Collins with gratitude.
Okay. Further motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympia. All in favor? On the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
I actually think, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I actually think we did receive this donation previously and had accepted it with gratitude. If I'm mistaken and he's given another donation, this is another one?
We can't thank Danny Collins.
Wow, yeah, we really can't thank him. Okay.
So, thank you.
So all in favor, we are all in favor on that motion?
Yes.
That's it for my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Murtagh. Okay. We do have a written communication. It's from the MASC official delegate form. There is a vote that's required.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Hockman? Ms. Dunn, are you gonna take your annual trek down to the Cape this fall?
I would love to do that.
Motion to nominate Beverly Ann Griffin-Dunn as the delegate for the PBD Public School.
Second. Okay. You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympia. All in favor? We are, that's a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for supporting us and going, being our delegate.
It is an honor. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee, Mr. Hockman, anything new?
Nothing at this time.
Finance, we'll hold that one for Mrs. Koppner. School safety, Mr. Olympia?
Yes, we have a school safety meeting scheduled for, I believe it's Tuesday, June 11th, before the regularly scheduled school committee meeting.
Great, thank you. Athletics and wellness, Mr. Hockman?
Nothing at this time.
Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Building and grounds, Mr. Amico?
Nothing to report.
Parent and student advisory boards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report at this time.
Special education parent advisory board, Mr. Olympia?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. City council and legislative delegation, Mr. Anodes?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Our next meeting, our next regular school committee meeting is June 11th, 2019. And we do have our budget review meeting tomorrow night. All matters we handle in the regular course, Mrs. Dunn, before we adjourn?
Under new business?
New business, yes, I'm sorry. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. Under new business, what I'd like to bring forward are